Special session of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall at my video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or signing the Zoom webinar. This meeting is not being broadcast live, but it is being recorded and will be aired later on the city's YouTube channel and on Comcast Cable Channel 30 in City's offices. Due to the nature of this special session, there will be no opportunities for the public to speak during today's meeting. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. More information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español están disponibles cuando se solicitan. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7500. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. By Pledge of Allegiance, we are by the United States of America, the two public, which is Spain's, one of the indigenous, and we got it. We did consult with liberty and justice for all. The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Cala Fuia etcetera Treaty with the federal government of the state. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. All right, and we have this special session for a sad reason because our city manager is leaving us to go to Washington County, the cross from the Big River. And I will turn it over to her.
I did not actually write anything. I just realized that's all that's there. I am, I have loved this job. And I have loved working with this community. I love Milwaukee. I am so incredibly grateful for the opportunity that this me gave me to contract things and to prove myself over seven and a half years. My life is profoundly because of it. It's bittersweet, but I also believe that there are moments when, I was talking to the police chief, and we were talking about his retirement date, and he said, you know, I just realized that you go when it's going well. You go when you don't feel like you're leaning a big bag. You go when it's time so that you don't feel this call to have to stay and fix it. And I went along that. You go when things are going well. So tonight, we're gonna talk about a pro temp for the tenure while I am off and while we're looking. For the community who's curious, we will be hiring, you will be, whenever you have time, I'm working on that for you now. I'm gonna send bids to the council this week. Technically, it's under the threshold that you all can just choose someone. You don't actually have to do a competitive bidding process. There's really only one person doing that in the region. So I'll give you that information if that doesn't work, hope I can. We, during that, Emma Sager, who is incredible, and you all are incredibly lucky out of her acting as the city manager. Emma helped us write our con plan and she helped us write our action plan. She knows Milwaukee and she loves Milwaukee almost as much as I do. But I'm just, I'm so excited about her opportunity to be here and I'm excited about the great things she's gonna do while she's responsible for the thing I love. So I am here to answer my question, by the way, through our resolution tonight, appointing our pro temp. It would be starting April 9th. I will be here until midnight, I promise, on April 8th. And then at 12:01, Emma's in charge and the police officer.
Hopefully, we won't have any middle of the night.
It'll be pro and wow, party.
Technically, the last, when we had to choose whip the last night, we actually had a should be.
Yes. Wow. Okay, so people got a redlined version of the, of the resolution to make the change, make the change from eight to nine so that it's clear that midnight is supposed to fly. Yeah, or it is, or whatever. It's the, it's the halving, it's the witching hour. Anybody have any other comments on the resolution?
Not on that resolution, you just must thank you for everything that you've given the city. And I know it's had an impact on you, but Emma lives all over this place.
Yeah, should say there's a curtain. So we'll have these conversations to look better now.
Sure, there will be at least one.
We'll say more stuff at the party. That's what we're meant to say. You said that you were profoundly different in so is the city of Milwaukee because of your work. So it's, you've been amazing. It's very, it's bittersweet. Happy for you, sad for Milwaukee. But we will say a lot more when the time comes.
Thank you so much.
And we have the Bush meeting. You will be here for next week's meeting. I will, but I'll be here for April 2nd. And we do have a panel meeting that we'll put on. It's actually a meeting for the work session. So we can say thank you for the work session, but I don't have a little, so we'll do my head. Any questions about process? Do you think we'll do anything?
I'm okay with what you described. Any questions about that? Or any comments on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion?
I'll walk through this. Regrettably, I'll move to, through the resolution, declaring the office of city manager vacant and appointing Emma Sager manager pro temp and directing the recruitment for a new city.
As amended.
As amended.
Wait, if we don't.
If you never.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution as amended declaring the office of city manager vacant, appointing Emma Sager manager pro temp and directing the recruitment of a new city manager. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None heard, it passes unanimously? Congratulations, Emma. By the way, do we say pro temp as opposed to acting? I'm used to things being acting. What is a pro temp?
It doesn't matter. Your term is called pro temp. Acting is the action. So either word. I don't think she needs. What do we put in press release? Acting?
Acting. Okay. Good to know. All right.
Thank you.
Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the special session.
We adjourn. I second.
To move and second to adjourn the special session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. None heard. You are adjourned. Now we'll go into our study session, in which our agenda is an update from Emma Sager. And, oh yeah, we just changed the title here. Acting city manager.
Well, no, it's not.
Not yet, not yet.
April till next month.
And our Equity Inclusion Coordinator Gabriela Centroyo Gutierrez. Anybody running this lecture? There she goes. Whoa.
Right. Good evening, Mayor, President of Councilors. First off, thank you for the resolution. I'm really excited. They're impossible shoes to fill, but I'm gonna do the best I can to serve you and service the community in the weeks and months of months. We are here tonight to provide a quarterly equity goal update for you. I have the very easy job of teeing up the conversation and then letting this amazing human's work shine. I just continue to be so impressed by the, the volume of work that Gabriela is moving forward as her Equity Inclusion Coordinator, but also the way in which she's moving that immense amount of work forward with such dedication, such thoughtfulness and building tremendous relationships as she goes. What she's gonna share with you tonight is like the tip of the iceberg. Like, we literally have to sit there and pilot like, okay, you only pick three things to put on there. We're gonna put these three. And so I'm hoping the staff report, you gotta feel a little more flavor of all the different things she's moving forward. So I'm just really grateful and really proud of you for that.
Next one. Okay.
Try now.
Okay. So we're just gonna do a quick recap. Most of you have heard all this before, but because I think Councillor Adamo wasn't here the last time we gave this update, just a little bit of the, the sequence of events that got us to today and where we are in this goal. And I'll hand it over to Gabriela. She's gonna talk through what's happened in the last three months since she last gave an update to you, and then we'll open up for the session in question. Next one. So as a recap, this has been a council goal since August 2020. A lot of work has happened in that intervening time. As this community has grappled with what it means to prioritize equity, diversity, and inclusion and justice as we think about as a city, how we ensure and enshrine those values into our services, how we change our culture and how we build things to, to institutionalize equity throughout the city going forward. Some of the highlights of how we've done that work. In August of 2021, council established the Equity Steering Committee, which is just a fantastic group of community members who, who guide and steer and advise staff on, on how to hold ourselves accountable to this goal moving forward. It's been a real pleasure getting to work with them. I think my first meeting with them was a couple of weeks into my tenure. And it's just been a real highlight of, of that experience. We also know that when you're doing equity work, you have to constantly be learning. You're never gonna have all the answers. You always need to be reflecting on where those disparities are, where the gaps are that we need to address. So again, with council's support and the direction of Ann, we embarked on a really comprehensive assessment of equity in the community, in the city, involved engaging staff, involved engaging community members. And though, that started in fall of 2022, the assessment took about a year to complete. And the assessment was, the results were presented in fall of 2023. I think the day Gabriela started, I printed out the assessment report, put it on her desk. It was like, here you go. And she really gets just hit the ground running, taking that wealth of information and turning it into an action plan. That's the last milestone that kind of gets us to today. In December, Gabriela and I came to all of you and we said, okay, there's so many places that we can start, there's so many things to dive into here. Here's what we think is going to make the most meaningful difference over the next three years. Here's the roadmap we would like to present. Thank you for your unanimous endorsement of that work plan with the resolution you passed in December. And we've just really, you have really hit the ground running right out of the gate. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Gabriela to kind of frame up that work plan and then tell you some highlights of what's going forward in the next quarter.
Thank you, Emma. Right, I'm gonna switch us over to the next slide. If you'll go. No, that's my fault. I'm moving things around. Okay. Great, okay. I'm actually passing this on to Emma.
Sure.
Thank you.
So just to get us transitioning to understanding the equity plan. So essentially, the core structure of it is organized into these three traps you see above. These include actions led by me as your Equity Inclusion Coordinator and a core function of the city's equity program. I'm also not alone in this process. I've supported my colleagues that very much are in favor of and prioritizing equity work. And the specialty leadership. Track two is focusing areas to be explored by the Equity Steering Committee. And this includes with our support as well, I and Emma's. And if you don't know, the amazing Equity Steering Committee. These are again, nine committee members who live, work their own business in Milwaukee as well as are leading other equity work outside of Milwaukee, either at the city, county, or state levels. And as some of my favorite collaborators in this work, really much appreciate working with them. And then that third track of this kind of work, it includes major city initiatives with an equity nexus that the cities, that I advise on and support in that steps, or the Equity Steering Committee as well. So as Emma touched on in the staff report, there are quite a few items that are, that we've accomplished or ongoing work. But to the three that I've chosen here to wanna highlight, this includes, in partnership with the Office of Reports of Records with Scott and Nicole, we together and I reviewed all of council's templates, resources and meeting materials and many recommendations for them to improve accessibility and translation as well. And one of my favorite additions has been in adding an equity impact statement as part of that staff review report template that goes into effect on my birthday. And this is very similar to our climate impact section. Where staff will pass with sending their reports to me for review. Well, climate is directed to Peter and our environmental natural resource team. But for me, for that equity, I would review that section of their staff report in hopes of creating greater dialogue around their equity projects and what that focus is, as well as you will get that revision and talk about equity considerations. And as for the second item here, I've sorted on hiring panels for the Assistant City Engineer, the HR Analyst position, Police Chief, and currently ongoing, our Library Assistance. And a part, a huge part of this work was providing direct support and equity expertise in those spaces, but also making observations of the processes to later share with our HR Director, Brandy, who is here today. Where together, we'll kind of work on standardizing, making consistent those hiring practices that make sure are more equitable and inclusive in that process. And for that third piece that I wanted to highlight, and this was something that I'm very passionate about with working at the city level is, and come to one that others are also interested, is greater cross collaboration across departments to combine our equity efforts to really be one Milwaukee in this work. And in this example, and Brent, who's also here, is our Library Director. Together and I, we sponsored and co-presented a community conversation on February 28th at the Lanning Library called Holding Difficult Truths, Transforming Our Broken Past Into a Hopeful Future, which was in connection to Black Excellence Month. And this was just the beginning of that partnership. Right? So switching us to that second piece of track two of this work. So the Equity Steering Committee focused areas for this year. They have several points, but as, as the ESE member specifically pointed out, these kind of set the foundational areas to overall group access and communication with the city of Milwaukee for community members. And these three, three priority areas include communication, transparency, and storytelling, recruitment, hiring, and retention, and engagement advocates. Now, to kind of give an overview of our collaboration work with Equity Steering Committee. So for what we've done in this past year, in the January meeting with support of Emma as well, we've confirmed the, confirmed the priority areas focused and really narrowed them down. We've met with the city's events and Emergency Management Coordinator to discuss and really solidify those priorities. We began also discussion around group commitments and processes. And then, then in our February meeting, we began discussion about expressed interest in helping administer a ongoing, here we go, really starting base of a multicultural event community fund program. Something that I appreciate the group, and I actually wanna highlight here, was the word grant, a part of this piece. The groups identified how that could be and considering how formal government pieces can be intimidating and they intentionally chose the word community funds. And so I just wanted to highlight that word. That's ongoing and we'll have discussions set in April specifically to lay out the guidelines for what that process would look like. And in March, this, today, this month, and next week actually, we'll be focusing on the city's communications, we'll be meeting with the city's Communications Program Manager and Library Director to discuss on that second, the priority of communications, transparency, and storytelling to really get at telling Milwaukee's equity story. And that entails in many different facets of equity, of the library's events and programming, and especially, as I mentioned previously, coming to understand the love of art out of Milwaukee as another piece of that storytelling. And as I mentioned in our April meeting, we'll continue to work on what this multicultural community fund program would look like. And then in May, is this transparency piece, where we're in this ongoing process of meeting with an equity analytics consultant to really help us narrow down some equity indicators to focus on that measurement and that tracking piece of this work. Yeah. Did you have anything else you wanted to add to that, Emma?
No, it's a great recap and, and I just wanna appreciate council's discussion and dialogue with us about those events priorities and the direction you gave us, which then allowed us to go talk to ESC about that multicultural event community fund. They're really excited about helping lead that work and helping that take shape. So we're excited to keep working with them on that, for you all.
We're all, we're almost there. That's track three of that work. And this is really the, I mentioned, the major cities initiative with an equity nexus and what that ongoing work looked like, a partnership with our Transportation Systems Plan. We're recently attending the North Clackamas School District Fair, Community Fair that was last week. This was attending and supporting their Black Excellence Month Assembly at Milwaukee High School. And this was also translating materials for public outreach. And then in terms of our park systems, I think that some of you attended. Mayor Brady was there and Councillor Adamo was there. Attended our, our Neighborhood Parks Construction Kickoff Event this past weekend on Saturday. I thought it was successfully attended, other than the weather and the wind. That was very difficult that day. It was very great. And we just, you know, supported the planning piece and multiple material that I provided as well. In terms of strategic planning here, I serve as a member of the Strategic Plan Steering Committee and then really ensuring with Emma and Brandy's support and the rest of the committee to ensure equity is a part embedded within our strategic plan, not separate items. And, and yeah.
On the budget side, Gabriela's been a great partner with me as we're putting the budget together and preparing to bring that to you in April. We're looking at that through the lenses of your goals, including equity justice and inclusion. And you know, budgets are moral documents. We have to put our money where our mouth is. So we're, we're working on supporting our, our managers and as they are winning up budget trade-offs, as we're facing resource constraints, how do we make sure we're making those decisions through an equity lens or using an equity framework? And then telling that story about how our budget propels our equity work.
Is that without the image? Do you think you have you?
Oh, this is funny. Yes, I totally wrapped it up, right? I'm the book guy. So again, that was just a really small snapshot of the amazing work that Gabriela has led. As the, the staff report includes a lot more examples. I mean, she is probably the busiest person in the city, meeting in all buildings, meeting with community members at so many night meetings, which I really appreciate. But she is living and breathing this plan and really bringing it to life. What's coming up over the next quarter? We're gonna keep leaning in with the Equity Steering Committee. We're really excited about the progress we're making around this communication, storytelling, and transparency focus area. And I think they're really feeling excited and passionate about it as well. Gabriela mentioned the strategic plan. That is now complete. We have a internal strategic plan for Team Milwaukee. It has the same time horizon as our equity plans, 2024 to 2027. We really intentionally worked to make those integrated. They are not two separate documents. They are connected and combined. So we're, we're getting ready to shift from the planning phase into the implementation phase and working together on how do we keep equity in the forefront. Part of that is developing tools that allow staff, even if Gabriela's not available to come to their meeting, how can they have some resources to guide themselves through, through equity thinking? And so Gabriela is working to develop an equity framework that includes some questions you should be asking about, you know, who is included in your process or who is left out? Who is impacted by the decisions you're making? How are you evaluating those impacts? And these are things that can apply to someone in public works, someone in the library, someone in the police department, really kind of universal toolkit that, that our staff can begin putting into practice. And then there's a whole lot of other stuff that we didn't have time to get to today. But we really wanted to, to kind of end with asking you, is there anything you haven't heard us talk about that you wanna hear more about, or anything we did touch on that you want us to dig deeper into? And then we'll just kind of keep this as an ongoing question. This plan is a living document. If there is something that is coming to you from the community or something that you're really wrestling with, that you want us to consider integrating into our plan, let us know. You need, you wanna be nimble and responsive. That's our show.
Questions or comments from Milwaukee?
Yeah, I'm, I'm really impressed with the, just the amount of activity that's going on. But, you know, the, the question I have is, how do we measure success?
I think that's, I mentioned previously, I think that's definitely a different effort because we also have different definitions of success when it comes to equity work. And I think a part of that is bringing in a consultant along with a partner with me in that work. And that's what I mentioned with ESC, bringing analytics consultant that has different varieties because there is a strategic plan focus of that success. There is a, that is that internal piece, but there's also this community engagement external piece. So we're really getting to, and also timeframe. So defining those different priorities and areas, now that we've identified a few, we can really dive into kind of measuring what can those different measurements look like. I know I didn't give you a direct answer. It's like, it's a work in progress and different, there are different answers to your question.
What I really appreciate about, we, we had a call, he was last speaking with this consultant. He's gonna be supporting us developing equity metrics. You said so tactfully, but also so directly. This can't be another two-year-long equity assessment. Like, we, we have to get down, it's not gonna be perfect. Metrics are never perfect. Equity metrics for sure aren't perfect, but we've gotta start somewhere. And we were really clear that this, this is, this is a couple of months, work with staff, work with our ESC to get something going. We have a starter list of some metrics and the equity score. You know, things like, as Gabriela said, this is, this has an internal component and an external component. So we can do things through staff surveys with our wonderful HR department about, you know, our staff feeling, like the culture is inclusive, our staff feeling they can show up and be your authentic selves. We can also do things in terms of community survey to capture that. But there's also the, the measuring the outcomes of the work we do. So our police department is gathering a lot of data on equity in terms of their actions. That's great, but that data is only as good as we talk about it and use it to drive change forward. So we're working with our PD on some data dashboards, doing some data storytelling. But we, we know that's the answer, the question you're gonna always ask me, Councillor Adamo, when we come here. And our goal is to, to, to get to actual concrete methods as fast as we possibly can. So we need to turn that over.
Well, I see the work is ongoing now and I think that, you know, I can, I can envision, you know, you know, the metrics, because, you know, it's the, it's the initial phases, it's the kickoff. It's, you know, the things that are, in my view, not that hard to measure. Once you get to outcomes, man, I just love to value and measure those. And so that's why I asked the question.
Just to point out too, for those who maybe don't have access to that, the staff report includes material of the equity plan. Examples of those include related to work culture, staff competency, that's that training piece of this work too, and education. It is your hiring practice, right? Staff diversity and representation. And then we also have community disparities, community inclusion, and city investments.
Thank you.
Councillor Coastalbody, did you?
Yeah. Thank you so much for this.
Yeah, and um, thank you so much for this. Um, I'm really encouraged by a lot of the work. And I really feel like this, this is really how you get to systemically replace the old historical way. You know, marginalized policies, definitions, structures, right? This is how you implement, you start, you know, sys- systematically implementing VI into what the city does. Um, so I appreciate it very much. They're, they're good steps. And I, I do see, the more internal thing that I see us to be able to measure, right? Like how are we doing that? You know, those are very interesting to see and find out. And I know the engagement stuff might be, it's a little bit difficult, you know, to engage with the communities. Um, it could result with that, right? And I, I think that's gonna take time to find out, you know, through, that might take a period to really get that feedback back. But at least it's, it's comforting and encouraging to know that internally we can do a lot, we can see results quite quickly. And like you were saying, I mean, Assistant Senior Manager, I'm just gonna. Um, you know, it's gonna be as you know, like as people, these things are gonna start seeing the results. And then that'll allow you to make those adjustments. And we appreciate you considering a lot of document. Um, I'm also really happy to see the equity impact on the staff report. So I, I truly believe that, that, you know, that's something you can measure too, just by simply the decisions that ourselves and future policymakers all die asleep, right? So that's a, that's a big deal, because those things make a big, big impact. I need the budget and I need the climate. That really does give me a different lens, because I'm not always educated on a lot of that stuff and I can admit that. Um, and the equity part, again, there's a lot still left to be learned. So um, you being a part of that, I, I, I'm extremely excited um to see that, because it's really gonna influence a lot of policy. And our time is limited, um, with the future policymakers, that's really gonna impact them. So I appreciate that very much. I don't really even know if I, I have any questions. I think most of it is, is, you know, I'm, I'm excited to see what this is gonna look like um and how this all comes together. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm excited too. I'll be back every month. I do have in five months, I don't want to really update.
Councilor Sondra, thanks. Um, well, I wanna thank a lot of thanks for the hard work that you're putting in. I'm just really grateful that you're here um and grateful that um that you have a really intentional, intentional approach for the work that you do. Um, I, I guess it, the questions around metrics bring down a lot of costs for me when it comes to equity. And if we're really um, we're really analyzing how um equity comes into play with the metrics. And what metrics kind of grounded in. Um, I think that that means we have to unpack systems of oppression, systemic oppression and white supremacy that, that are within the institution that we work in. Um, so I think. I, I, I look forward to some of those conversations and seeing the leadership and the leadership of the equity steering committee come forth on that. And um, you know, helping us kind of get to a point of like, understanding that qualitative um and anecdotal can be just as powerful as um quantitative numbers. Um, and an experience that someone has when they come into one of our buildings where they can, you know, to access services. Sometimes you just can't quantify that, but you know that, that what we're doing is. Um, I guess my biggest question really is, you know, how can we help through this process? Where, where do you want to see council plugging in and um and helping to lift?
Good. Uh, like I think that's a great, great question. I think just in terms of like, I need a lot of this work collaboration. I talk about it being beyond myself. I think it's you all speaking to it. I think it's, I even saw you at the community conversation around housing and belonging. And it's how we both talk about Milwaukee and this equity work moving forward, highlighting the PD's department, right? A lot of their commitment to equity and ongoing um intervention and support for our in-house community members. So I think a lot of that is collaboration together. Um, I think something I mentioned, and I think it's the bureaucratic pieces of this work, is I don't get as much interaction with you all outside of, outside of this presentation, right? And I think that's something that I'd like to see a lot more in community events. Or if there is something I don't know about, forwarding it to me. I've really enjoyed even, I think Mayor Brady and I attended the Vietnamese Memorial New Year's Celebration. We represented Milwaukee in that space and that conversation. And I think it's, it's a joint effort in that. And it's also something I'll say, I'll think about more um, um, about how city council can go on and support this work. Outside of even making this a priority, right? Climate and equity as a priority here at the city.
And I just wanna quickly chime in on your first point too about um quantitative data has value and is great. And um we should discount the importance of qualitative data or things that we can't measure. And uh Gabriella and I had a great conversation last week about the refinancing of the staff report. And I tell her all the time how amazing she is and she's like, I don't know, I'm doing enough. And uh, we talk a lot about how her number one priority is relationships, internal and external. And she's investing a ton of time in that. That's a really hard thing to quantify and measure. But it's invaluable in what it does for staff experience and what it does for community experience. And we had a, a, a staff member in our public works team reach out to Gabriella saying, yeah, I don't really work on this project, but I heard about Hillside. And I, I have some concerns about the, the relocation um that's happening there. And I just didn't know who to talk to. And I thought you, I was like, that's really, like, that is the success. That is, you know, someone feeling comfortable to say, I don't really know what, what, but I'm feeling something. Can you help me process that? Can you help me connect with the expert who does know? I think that's all you could ever ask for in your equity board. So, and we can't really measure that, but it matters.
Well, I guess you, the point I was trying to make is that sometimes it's not about metrics. Sometimes the, the actual use of metrics as a lens by which we assign value to things is grounded in that systemic pressure. So um, I think that, you know, it is a constant challenge to all of us to be thinking about the way that we know things are making a difference and the, and the terms that we assign to them. Um, and that's not, I mean, like, I think that unfortunately, the way that our dominant society is set up is that you get more money for things when you can quantify the problem. You get grants for things that have gone wrong. And eventually it becomes very fatiguing for communities that are intersectionally marginalized in so many different ways, but are yet a global majority, to be thinking about how they define themselves as what's wrong. And, and that that's the only way that we can justify getting more support for making um a space and a system more inclusive. And that really, um, it weighs on my heart in the work that we do. So I just, I really appreciate that you are here and you're doing this so.
Great words. I have a few questions. First of all, awesome. Thank you so much. And great work you did. I had a few follow up questions. You had mentioned something about making sure our hiring practices are a little more equitable. And I was wondering, you know, that my employer has toyed with not having names on resumes because of COVID. I'm just glad you haven't seen the names sometimes. Um, and I assume that also would be things as like diverse interview panels. So I'm wondering, are there things that you've seen or that we're thinking about?
Well, we do do, um, and we have already.
Oh, you can have it back too.
We do uh remove names from revenue, so we haven't, what did that, the last year?
Oh, we did that right on the gate, so mid to late twenty two.
Oh, wow, great.
Um, and, and Brandy has been just a great champion too of, of having us review our practices, making sure they're inclusive and accessible. I think what Gabriella was speaking to is, we don't have a, a really standardized way. Um, like every panel looks and feels a little bit different. There's been a lot of discretion left up to, to the manager. And um, this team's just been having great dialogue about how that's working. And Gabriella is like getting in there and, and experiencing it, rather than just coming in like, here's what we should do and why. Um, are there other kind of things you wanna speak to?
I know that I think, well, maybe I haven't touched on this actually with Brandy yet. I wanna, I wanna also reach to a point where we also may not need to necessarily remove names. Because I think of names carry a familial connection, right? Like I want us to out-train that bias or recognize that bias when it comes and arrives. But for now, I think that is a, a practice that until we have some metrics of like, what's the outcomes look like? Because we also don't have uh applicant tracking processes very well in place until the past year and a half that actually Brandy has been implementing and tracking. So we're trying to have kind of tracking, is this working? And if it's not, we'll try another approach. If that's not working, we'll try another approach. So I um, I think for now, I think the way that uh removing names is, is the process that we're going through. And we'll see the impacts of that in our application and hiring pool. We're also a small city. I've come to learn in some of the practices that when it comes to small um, smaller bureaucratic entities, we don't have as much positions also open as opposed to larger entities where I originally came from, ODOT, where um it was very much like hard, hard to fill positions because there were so many empty. And so I think this is a different typical problem um that we're facing here at the city. But we're trying to be intentional and figure out different approaches as we go.
And when we talk to the steering committee about this, this is their, their next focus area they wanna take on. Uh, Brandy will come in and join in that. They'll, they'll be kind of a resource on those internal processes. But I think they are also interested in how are we attracting first candidate pools for the limited um vacancies that we do have. But, but because they're limited, it's even more important that we're, we're, you know, reaching them and, and getting really creative about how we, we advertise them and how people feel and how we're to respond to this.
I also wanna just give credit to Brandy. She's already leading those efforts ongoing too.
A few more, a couple more questions. When, when it comes to um doing a, a, a hiring notice or anything that we're doing that's a public facing document, when it, um, for translation, do we have on-call translators that take the document? And then I ask this because I received a question at my work today saying, hey, Jane, we have a request to put a credit application in Spanish. We've never had that request before. How do we go about that? And that got me to thinking like, well, how do we translate our documents generally? And I didn't know the answer to that, so I'm just curious.
Yeah.
How, how we go about that? And do we do job announcements in other languages?
Yep. Um, like, if only I could put like the connection on our internal internet page, that was one of the first things too, looking at our language contracts. Um, we do have uh three different contracts, one for um in media, over the phone with Language Line as part of that work. Language Line is over the phone, um, translation services that you can dial. That's specifically uh um City Milwaukee access. And then we also have uh um interpretation, like appointment ones that are in person that we could do. And then the third one is materials focus. So we have, do have three different contracts. And I don't have the names off the top of my head outside of Language Line, just because that's the one that we most use. Um, and um, I think outside of that, we also have our internal staff who depending on capacity, right, and are available to translate in that moment that they can done, that they can call us. We have on that list, on that internet page, hey, here's our staff who speak these different languages. And then right now it's two, it's Spanish and Russian of internal expertise who have that uh ability and skill. Outside and then outside of that, it's also, hey, here are your three options depending on what kind of translation you'd be. Materials, appointment, um, or over the phone media services.
And our staff that um got on that list, they get a language pay differential because it's a qualification that they're working with the table. It's happened last week. We had someone here report when you did Russian, you're prediction, ran down, got Jordan, came out, both of us assist. Um, that's another exciting update that I, that's in our staff report. I just wanna call out. This is Predator Mountain in fiscal court. Uh, they have just secured once a month at court, um, they have an interpreter, a Spanish interpreter onsite to just run, to go.
And so do they? I mean, do they try to book people then for that date or?
I believe, I believe that's how it differentiates us.
And you should get laid more because you're Russian. Speaking experience.
Something's wrong.
Did you say, uh, maybe I misunderstood this, but did you say that um the, of the multicultural, I think you call it community fund? And did you say that that's because of the word grant? Maybe I misunderstood that.
It can sometimes be a barrier that includes a formal processes to applications for community members.
Okay. We, we, and my employer, uh, employers also try very hard to lower barriers when it comes to grants and such as that because of the systemic issues on. Um, we, we now try and hold a um, at least once before, especially our, our P's also um, that there's an opportunity. People come in, speak different languages or maybe need more help with how the grant work and I don't understand this process. So there's like a meeting that you can go, you can attend before the grant deadline. Do we do anything of this nature in Milwaukee?
Well, we.
And I know that we, I, I should say, my employer has the funds to make this happen a little bit easier than maybe. I'm just curious if we.
When your employer gives away.
And we get it.
No, I mean, it's a great question. And I can't think of a current grant program. If we have the URA NDA grant program, that's administered largely by the, the British Association of Answers.
Interesting, last grant.
Um, but I think it's a great, it's a great suggestion. And it's exactly why with this multicultural community event, community fund, we have, we wanna partner with the ESC right at the beginning to have them help us, you know, in our bureaucratic ways and make this a process that achieves the goal, which is getting money into the hands of community members who wanna put on great expense.
Or have an, in the past historically.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right, exactly.
So the last time we gave out grant funds, it's actually during COVID, we gave out money for small businesses. Um, and they were small dollar grants. We did actually work with an organization that was able to uh release that information effectively. Which is, we did, we prioritize women by pre-owned businesses, we prioritize small businesses. So we did a lot of, we actually learned a lot of that through our conversations with them to make sure that we release those funds correctly. But I can also send out information to Gabriella just so she has it about what we did at that time. But it, it was really helpful to make sure that people were most of me, had the most access.
Great. And then my last uh question or comments or comment. The, putting the uh equity impact on the template, I think is important. Uh, my employer, which I'll just say is Metro. And uh, the thing that I'm proud of, and I mentioned it to my, my introduce, is that, oh, we, we, we got council pass uh not only plain language, which is fine, a little hoppy, lucid, anyone who knows me, that's my hoppy, but also inclusive language in our code. And we now mandate, if you're bringing in ordinance that's gonna change the code, not only should that include plain and inclusive language, but to take that opportunity to look at the chapter and say, are there other updates that we can do? So I'm just gonna throw that out there. And even something like changing the term citizen to resident in our regulatory code made a difference. And we had people come up to us and say, thank you for making that change. It's just one word, but it means a lot and it has, you know, connotations and so like that. It's not that our code is full of language that's terrible, but just if you have an opportunity, I think we should, should already practice that.
Absolutely. Just a quick note that um in a couple weeks, in April, um, our community engagement program committee will come and talk to you about some cleanup we wanna do on the NDA program. It's a great example of, but you gotta touch that language from like two thousand ten. Right, yeah. Lots of reference to computer labs. We don't have a lot.
So thank you so much for your.
Yeah, that's great.
Hey, well, yeah, I add on to everyone's thank yous and it's impressive to see everything you're doing. Um, I had, did have a couple of questions. Um. I, first off, I noticed that four ESC members to terms end this year. Uh, but we don't have it listed as having openings for our application process. So does that mean they've all four expressed their intent to re-up for another term?
Three out of the four, David. One is available.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, okay. I will talk to Scott and Nicole about that, because I'm pretty sure, I'm not sure what you want.
So I don't know, too, I've, I've already received three applications already from community members who are very much interested, yeah, so.
Okay, good. Um, the uh, well, one, just a little mundane question. I thought I was the queen of acronyms, but I don't know what, there's one in your staff report that I don't know, which is ERG.
Yes.
What is an ERG?
Employee Resource Department.
Ah, okay, okay.
Okay.
Well, that leads me to another question I wanted to ask, is your equity chats that you do on a recurring basis?
Yeah.
How well are they attended? And are they attended by the same group of people all the time? Or do you have like that move? Or do you have like that move? Um, I mean, is there a turn up or? Can you tell us about those?
Yeah, definitely. So they are the same group for the most part of people because it is self-selecting to attend that space. It's encouraged by all. Um, but it is definitely, I think there are groups evident who are very much eager to learn more about that work. Or, um, and about maybe, and to give some context again, to be our hundred and forty-seven employees at Milwaukee. And there's about, sometimes it varies between twelve to seventeen people attend around there. And some actually include leadership in some of, in some of those conversations. Um, I think that's something that I think regardless, um, you need multiple approaches when it comes to equity trainings. Ones that's required and, uh, um, maybe department focused or online. Like I think in the staff report I mentioned, we're going to have a required microgressions, uh, training partner in H R that we do through Mioba. This is one of those optional spaces to have those items. And then there's department consultant oriented that are hired. So really taking this on different approaches. But that is a space that already was, uh, created before. I just restructured it to have a monthly topic each time. And those staff members in it varies who are interested in that specific monthly topic. We have women's history and intersectionality this month, so really excited.
Well, I'm glad to hear, I mean, twelve to seventeen is like good, and that's, that's a good, that's a good size group. So that's great to hear. Um, does the judge use the language one?
I, uh, I mean, it's important does. In the example I gave where Jordan provided the Russian experience, um, the call kept dropping. So Language Line is great and it's not with fail safe. Um, but yes, they, they use it where, and I think in the cases where it's not Spanish, the system's needed when the Spanish interpreter is there, I think you say.
Um, and I guess, um, I mean, you talked a little bit about, uh, your, I mean, about, and the question that, sorry, I'm asked about. And employment interview processes and stuff. But we used to specifically list listed hiring, retention, recruiting as something for the E S C to have a role. And so could you talk a little bit about that, like what their role might look like and how?
The two items that this quickly come to mind and already are implemented is serving on those hiring panels. And I think that second piece was potentially, um, sharing about, um, a, uh, employment, like a E S C community fair. Like sharing your information because some of them are actually involved in school district with their positions that do have employment opportunities. And so I think that's something in collaboration with Brandy that would take on kind of in the summertime to really work through what that looks like and what that means. And again, a part of that is we only have a few positions sometimes available to bring to that doc fair. Um, but those were the top two that immediately came to mind, like outreach recommendations.
Exactly right. The third one that they've expressed, we haven't had a chance to, to really tease this apart and discuss what it would look like. But they bring up a lot, the idea of mentorship. So knowing that, you know, there's incredible folks in the E S C who have done incredible things in their careers. And they know that there are staff of color or staff who, you know, have different identities. Who might really benefit from having someone in the community who kind of expresses they're in their corner and can be, um, a partner to collaborate with. You know, as they're developing their own career. So I think they're really doing this more holistic approach of how our internal staff and our community can be part one of our broader community. We just have to discuss a little bit more about that. Good and with.
I think that's the retention piece of this that you're speaking to. And we did have that when they mentioned a mentorship in the affinity groups. We have a BICOC self-identifying and an L G B T Q group. Uh, and in those, we've, um, I've invited E S C for a lunch together with the staff. And, um, and in those affinity group spaces to meet together and they really enjoyed that. And actually requested for another website that will be planning equal. It's also an opportunity for networking and, um, sharing, uh, work and career advice.
Okay, um, that was it for my questions. Anybody else have questions? Questions? We have a last one. Can I say a last word?
I just wanted to call out, I know everybody has talked about, uh, Gabriella and the amazing work she's done. But I think that she really is exceptional in this part. Uh, I've watched a lot of people over the last several years do, um, equity work in different agencies. I think it's really important. I think there are some people who are getting really good at it. I think we let out. And I think her ability to form relationships in ways that are safe for people to ask hard and complicated questions is really telling. Of the work she's doing through this town. Um, and I think she's this one person change agent. I am really impressed by that. So I just, I don't get many more opportunities to say these things. But I wanted to make sure she knows that she really is, she's, she's pretty amazing. We're very looking. Thanks.
You do a good job. Seems incredible. You did a good show on the higher than you may even.
Which is also very intense process.
Well, actually, yeah, that does revise me. Like I, I take it we do two exit interviews, so we know when.
Should we do ours right now? No, 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 no.
I actually also just want to say I'd love to take that up. It was on the selection.
No, I am terrible. It's on you. Yeah. I'll take that. Brandy, thank you.
But we, I'm sorry, we do do exit interviews, sorry to air.
Yeah, from which we are some information about, to what, I'm clear about. What leads people to leave and to what extent these issues might be leading people to leave.
Okay, Brandy, is there anything else you want to mention on our interview?
Yeah, um, expectations around exit interviews are usually very high. And people want, um, hard data and, um, stats to be able to derive information. Um, however, in an organization this size, it's nearly impossible to provide such data without having someone. And my top priority is confidentiality of those. So it, it is difficult to come up with themes that don't, uh, really identify who it was or exactly what they said. So I generally collect qualitative data from those. And when I recognize a theme, I will address it head on with the, uh, director over that area. Uh, but I am deeply interested in, in up and tracking, uh, turnover rates and specifically turnover of our people. I mean, that is something that's really important to me to make sure, you know, when people are leaving, I need to know why. Um, so I, I dig and I, I've got questions that I ask. I, I get their surface level why and I dig a little deeper so I can understand a little better. And given our size, I've got my finger on the pulse of the organization that I can really press and, and understand even through those unspoken, uh, conversations as to, to why someone's really. But yes, they do get a in-person, offered an in-person exit interview with the average person.
Well, with that, I guess we are adjourned. Um, do we have more?
Council reports?
Oh, council reports. Sorry, sorry. Who has come forward to give a?
We recently had a CAD meeting on the sixth. Uh, just, uh, I don't have too much to, to report, but, uh, it is some good stuff. Uh, we are still looking for three rolling term members to come into the CAD, but also we're actively recruiting. Thank you for those members. Uh, we are also in discussion about potentially providing a stipend program for the three of them. With some needless, so right now, most of that we have put together is to leave our goal to be at the intent. Um, uh, right now it's, it's a two-question process. Um, the first question is your, your employer is not allowing paid time to attend. The second one is you qualify to read the following programs, Medicaid, Energy Systems, SNAP. Um, what we're trying to figure out right now is, is making sure that that stipend doesn't, doesn't potentially, because it's got to be taxed income unfortunately. But it's got to be taxed, right? So we're trying to make sure that, that, that extra income doesn't put them over the bar of being disqualified for other benefits, right? So it's kind of a fine line. Uh, right now they can't choose to collect a stipend for half the year instead of full year, but we discussed as well, so that way it doesn't affect other benefits. Um, but yeah, that's, that's one of the concerns that we're trying to mitigate. Um, we are trying to, we're looking at, trying to be more active in the community right now, taking a more active role in the underserved communities. Uh, we're trying to plan, uh, we're, we're planning right now, I'm doing some sort of listening tour, not just with the municipalities and local governments. But also with, uh, underserved community members directly and hearing directly from them what needs they want us to focus on. What are the things they like that, what are the reasons they have the most stuff? Um, so we're still planning that, that tour out, so we'll be coming to it, seeing all their units. Um, and then there is a new homeless services advisory board. I'm not, did you, we mentioned this before, have you mentioned this before, right? That's, just want to make sure it's the same one. Uh, we just learned a little bit more about it, the proposal behind it, kind of how, how us as CAD members can collaborate with any work, I mean, working together. There's, there's, you know, a lot of what they're going to be focused on, this is things that we focus on as well, um, for those populations. So we're excited after putting it together. We're looking forward to it. Um, and, and yeah, that's kind of where we're at right now. This is pretty much everything we talked about. Much else, but, um, I, I'm looking forward to it because again, there's a lot, we're trying to do a lot more activity. In terms of boots on the ground and getting to what, what needs to be done at the county level. Hopefully, hopefully no listen. Um, and yeah, that stipend is a pretty big deal. Uh, that, that's, that's a difference maker. That's probably a barrier or was a barrier for people being able to train some students. And it would be interesting, I know now since the fact that we get a bunch of friends, but it would be interesting to look at some of our benefits. Essentially, that's possibly the body that's going to stay. Yeah, that's it. That's all I have.
So, uh, I attended my first PARB meeting. Uh, and, uh, I, I sort of identified a theme between the PARB meeting and our own meetings about parks. It's like, we want to do something. What do we do? And so there's a bit of anxiety, frustration, recall about, you know, next steps and that kind of thing. So, uh, it, I guess we're all thinking along the same lines, I guess. I wish we all had, uh, some path forward. Uh, but you know, we had a, we had a good positive event on the weekend and the opening of the, the, the kickoff of the, um, of the park construction. And I was particularly impressed with the, you know, we had the obligatory photo of folks turning over the, you know, the, the ground with the shovels and that kind of thing. And then the adults got out of the way and brought the kids up. And it was so funny, they didn't stop when shovel fall. They moved every grain of dirt because they were ready to build a park. I think we told them to put it back or something like that, just to keep them occupied. But anyway, uh, that kind of shows what a park will, will do for, uh, folks with imagination. Um, but it, back to the PARB, um, you know, they discussed a lot of things. So you know, the, you know, the possibilities for governance change within the, within the district and the new director hire and that kind of thing. Because, you know, there's some feedback from the DAT that, uh, you know, all the members of the PARB are interested in. And, um, um, so there was a, a number of discussions about, uh, uh, you know, the, the PARB chair, uh, uh, meeting with, uh, uh, members of the, of the, of the Board of County Commissioners, particularly one in, in Jicker. Just to, uh, I think just express, you know, support for, uh, parks in Milwaukee and specifically for Milwaukee Bay Park. And, um, there's an interest in, uh, you know, in sending a formal letter to, to the board. To, I, I think what the PARB wants to do is just keep it on the forefront, uh, and that kind of thing. Um, and, uh, there was also a discussion about, um, naming of, especially the new parks. Because I think that, that, you know, there's just legacy names of the three parks. In some cases, they're just associated with streets and that kind of thing. And, uh, those streets might be related to people, but there's not a lot of knowledge about who those people were. They just have street name for them. And so I think that gets back to the, to the bigger question about, you know, you know, uh, our, our naming process for everything in the city. And, and, you know, uh, I, I think that that, we, we have to tackle that at some point. Because there's always going to be people who are going to come in and say, we should name this after, you know, X or Y. We just got to get on with that and decide what our process is. Let's see. So yeah, there, uh, there, they, uh, there was some discussion, uh, about, uh, you know, you know, the demands on the PARB and, you know, the demands are kind of low. Uh, and so there was a discussion about going toward a, you know, a quarterly meeting that are every other month meeting. But the PARB just kind of says, no, we don't want to lose any, even if we're just kind of getting together to get an update, we want to keep the momentum going. And that, that's fine. I understand that, uh, uh, desire as well. So, uh, if you want to add anything to, to the PARB discussion.
No, I think you covered it pretty well.
And, uh, the other report I had is on the audit committee. Uh, and so, um, basically the audit is complete. And, uh, the audit was again late this year, uh, but it was submitted, I think due to the 1st of August.
It, we got the letter today from Aldrich.
Okay, okay.
It is signed and signed it.
It is signed. It's getting submitted tomorrow by four K M.
Okay, okay. Because we had an extension.
We did have the extension. Um, it, just so the rest of the council knows, we went back and forth. Uh, typically there's four or five minutes that are asked for by an audit term. I think we ended up having three. Um, and the people helping us do the audit, I want to be clear, are the people who used to do our audit. So they were getting requests for changes, even though those are things that they would never request of changes of the city. Does that make sense? So they, uh, the firm that used to, um.
I think they're going to have to slow off this a little bit, sort of my understanding, because it is kind of.
It's indicated.
Yep.
So what happens with an audit is we sit down, they come in, they look at different processes that meet our financial, uh, rules. They check our rules to make sure that we're actually following our rules, whatever the financial best practices are. Um, typically they'll come back and they'll say, you miscoded a payment. Or you missed a process. You didn't follow your process and how you take it. What we found this time is it was just a lot more, we don't like the name you titled that account. If that makes sense. So the level of changes were just significantly different than the type of work we normally would receive. I want to be clear, I think this is a good document. I actually think they did a great job of editing it. Uh, but a lot of the changes were edits. They weren't necessarily things that would be required of the.
And what Ann was referring to, so we, when our finance director resigned in the end of the year, as we knew we were going to be short-staffed, um, and we're going to be late with the audit. We contacted with our previous auditor, Marina, who now is out of the audit game. That's why we no longer open them. They now are just a consultant for cities to help them prepare for audits. Because we also were not getting or have not been getting, um, much direction from our audit firm. We kind of send it off into a black box and it comes back with two hundred comments. And it's sort of like, good luck, try to fix that. So we contacted Marina to really consult with us, help us get over the finish line. Even after the full Marina Q C of the document, it's still generated a hundred plus comments.
So I just, um, there are, there are pros and cons, right? We want somebody to look at this document with finance, we want people to look at our finances with finance. Want to make sure that everything's on up and up. I also think that everything was up on the up and up. Um, and I think it was probably more than was needed. But I'm never going to turn down a better document. I think that's where we've landed. Um, and we're going to submit it tomorrow for this date. Uh, we also ran into things where, you know, it's December, the audits do, running a couple of day because of the sheer volume. Running a couple of day because of the sheer volume that changes, we're running a couple of days late. And the entire team goes on vacation, the consulting team, for three and a half weeks.
On the audit.
On the audit. So the height of season and they're not available, actually to even review the document. Happened twice that way, where we do edits and when we take them back and they say, oh, we're at least three weeks out. And normally, when it was Marina, we would get feedback with the pays. I mean, it was, it was a partnership. It was, they wanted us to be able to move forward. The audit should be into the state by
So there's actually a second audit. So there's an MRC audit. Has that been submitted?
That was submitted.
That was submitted in the PARB. So that's a very narrow audit for
Urban.
Urban renewal, yeah. And so to kind of piggyback on what Anne said, I will tell you, last year, I was concerned about the audit because there weren't, there wasn't much feedback. I mean, I always get worried when, you know, you don't get much out of audits. And then this year, it's like
Exactly.
And, and that kind of thing. And so it, it's just kind of puzzling. And so amongst all of these, you know, sort of edit kind of things, there were, I'm going to call them 14 findings and probably sure not using the wrong terminology. And the reason that they said that they, they, they were repeating last year, the question was, well, why weren't they in last year's audit? And they said, well, it was the first time. Think it was their answer. And so I don't have a problem with that, you know. I always get worried when there's zero or one, but you know, I get weekly worried when there's 14 or 15. I guess I have a comfort zone somewhere even, I don't know.
And I spoke with Councilor Massey as her representative of the audit firm. The majority of the changes that were findings were also things they asked us to, to change from the year before. So they had told us one direction. They then did the audit. They asked us to go back to the direction we'd previously done. So it felt a little, yeah, just simple, but I'm glad it's done. I'm glad it's going in. And we, for those of you who know the terminology, we have a clean audit. So for our financiers, for our backers, we were, we look good. The team did a good job.
So the edits are more to do with verbiage?
Not all of them. I mean, some of them were how, you know, it's were, yeah. So we have different types of accounts. City Hall is a great example. City Hall was an account. It was a one-time account. We needed to buy a city hall and we needed to sell it at city hall. And we needed to make sure that the payments and everything happened out of that. You can codify those accounts differently. Did we codify, like, which type of account do you want this to be? Do you, knowing it's going to close, how worried are you about the account, knowing that it's going to be? And it's not closed. You won't see it in the upcoming budget because we've now accepted the funds from the sale of the former city hall, the city halls now. So it's, I'm happy to go, actually, I'm not the right person to go to this. I'm going to be really clear. I'm not a finance director. I do believe we have some very intelligent people working on this. And if you feel like that's something you want to get into more detail on, I can set out a time for you. I would encourage, if we do that, to have time. She's wicked smart and she is a pleasure to work with. And she just has, she has the state-wide view. She sits on the board of the BOA team. She's, she just knows everything there is to know. She knows about changes that are and she's really great at explaining it to laypeople. So Michael did a nice job. I actually just want to end this with how it was hard, it was really bad to have, to pick up all those pieces and carry this across the line. He did it. Really impressed by that. So.
Well, and he's on our agenda next week.
You'll talk about after more next week.
Yeah.
So he'll talk about it. He can answer better.
Anything I missed?
No, I, I had learned more about government finances the last two and a half months than I ever thought was possible. It's going to arrive. My, Michael hasn't all the heavy lifting. I really just want to ask for all the support. But it, it's a complicated world. Of those 15 year-end journal entries, you know, two were actual, two were, we made a mistake. Two were standard end of year trups. Three were due to changing standards. This is something I didn't know, is that every year the GASB, which I don't, government, GAS, yes, changed their standards. And so that's really hard for a city to just track, like, oh gosh, now they want us to report this over here and categorize this as that. And so those are, it's some cleanup. And then eight of, or I mean, eight were altered preferences, where ones that our, our folks at Marina were like, that's not the wire. They just, they just want it. So I, I hear you a lot, Councilor Massey. Fifteen is a woo-woo, comes as a shiver-dying sign. But I, I'm confident that the team knows that the unqualified thing is a big table.
Well, and we, we learned a lot.
There are things that we did not.
That's absolutely true. I just had to hold on. And I'd rather have a way for people to be transparent with us, for me to be saying, this is a way to do that. I just think the mistakes are tiny.
No, not all of them.
The ones that, they're rather obvious. Okay.
Do you have more?
No.
More?
Anybody else? I have a couple of updates. Gabrielle had mentioned the Hillside relocation, some questions about relocation process and assistance. So I wanted to share that in the last C4 committee, which is the Plaquemus County committee that coordinates the land use, transportation, some housing conversations. We got an update from the Housing Authority of Plaquemus County, which is the public housing entity for this county. So it's all operated in-house. There are four major pieces to their portfolio. Hillside Park being currently 100 units within their public housing portfolio. Oregon City View Manor, which is also 100 units. Plaquemus Heights, which is located in Oregon City, and that is also 100 units. And they may have scattered sites that are single-family residential homes. There are 145 of those across the the redevelopment process that they're going through right now is with Hillside specifically. Vouchers, public housing vouchers are being created for individuals who are living on site. And the relocation process is started, but because the funding for this is through HUD, there's a HUD requirement that says that the family has to be relocated before their unit can be disposed. And that doesn't mean like torn down. In all cases, in Hillside, certainly it would, but with the scattered sites, they're looking at the disposition of some of those locations by selling them. Well, actually, all of them, either by selling off the location for land banking through nonprofits or into the private market. But they would be, the space would be, it's a requirement that it would stay as affordable housing. We just don't know at this point, with the creation of those vouchers, if that means that families that are in those scattered site houses or at Hillside will be relocated within Milwaukee. The vouchers could sell them anywhere. And so there are some protections that are in place for folks so that the moving costs are covered, relocation assistance is provided, all these sorts of parameters. And so it would be helpful. Gabriella, there's a person at the Housing Authority that I think you mentioned.
Well, before you move on from that, I would just say that I got a complaint in, I looked at my email. It was January, mid-January, from somebody who was being, you know, was, had notice of the need to relocate at Hillside. Was not very, did not feel like the Housing Authority was being very responsive. I didn't, you know, Brown and he lived in, and I had not heard back. So I assumed that things were smoothed over and the process was improved for people. But there was definitely a lot of contradiction about the process and the notification and stuff that was going on in January. And so I am curious to know more about what
Well, I'm not sure if council would be interested in this, but maybe having a more updated presentation about where things are at with public housing and the SHS funding and what that looks like. I know that on a, I'll come back to the public housing for a second, but the city-led initiatives, the five applications that we've been, all of the applications have been reviewed. And so Adam and Bahid at the county, they're anticipating that they'll have let me make sure that I have the timeline right. I'm sorry. A lot of notes. So they have reviewed, we have reviewed all of the applications. They're having conversations with and sending recommendations to their board, which is the Board of County Commissioners. Then they'll be in communication with cities and a lot of them cities across the county. So I think that's actually a really good sign. It shows that cities are at a point where they're interested in investing in this issue, you know. So maybe not with their own general fund, but their time and their, you know, their partnerships. There are some cities that are outside of the urban growth boundary. And so there have been plenty of general funds that have been reallocated to be able to provide services where SHS, the Support for House Services measure, that was confined to the metro boundary. And so for cities in Plaquemus County that are outside of that metro boundary, Plaquemus County can allocate this to well. So there are providers that are, that are doing work there. So to go back to the public housing piece, certainly watching the Hillside development is important for our council. But of the 145 scattered sites, 18 of those homes are in Milwaukee. And another 84 are in unincorporated Plaquemus County, where the concentrations of those are adjacent to Milwaukee, the large concentrations of those. So to me, that means that there are a lot of families that are in affordable housing right now that will be getting vouchers, they will be asked to begin the process of relocating. And that might take them out of the city. It might take them out of the school district. It might take them, you know, further away from places that they work. There may be childcare. So I'm interested in having a little bit more in-depth conversation about, you know, what this means for our residents and how am I be able to help out? The groundbreaking for Hillside Park for the first phase, which is 275 homes, should be this summer. And then Oregon City View, it was View Manor and Plaquemus Heights, they are actually doing a renovation of Plaquemus Heights and expanding that footprint in Oregon City. And then the disposition process for the other Oregon City site will, will move forward.
They're going to, you mean, they're going to close the whole Oregon City site?
Yeah. Yeah, so right now there are 445 existing units across Hillside, the scattered sites and the two Oregon City locations. There will be the creation of 750 total new units. So that's not in addition to the 445. It just means that vouchers will take the place of those 445. And then instead of 445 as our net, we'll have 750 as our net. So affordability is preserved for the scattered site locations, for those folks that are being disposed from homes that have been kind of like those single-family residential locations. But it sounds like the Plaquemus County Housing Authority is getting out of that business.
Is that why they're moving single-family residences?
Yeah. Yeah. So all of those sites will be either, I mean, I had like a list of, they're looking at affordable home ownership using a land bank model. They're looking at private market sales. But the sales would all be restricted for affordable housing. So the private market sale might not be as lucrative as they would be hoping. Or they're looking for a community-based organizational partnership that would keep those as affordable housing, but they wouldn't be operated at, through Plaquemus County.
Did you get a report that laid this out? And is there something?
I have some slides. Just going to have my notes. I'm happy to share both of those with council.
This, this is really interesting. To me, and I, I don't know if you're the right person to address the question too, but generally like, did people just get, you know, a disposition notice, which is really an eviction notice? I mean, is that what they got? Got something in the mail? I mean, there's people who lived in Hillside for years and years and years. That's their home.
They don't have some
Yeah, there've been a lot of communication at Hillside.
Okay. So this has been a long dialogue. It's been going on since we started the design process. And I just want to make sure that I give the county staffs credit. They've been
Okay.
But, you know, there's still legal burdens. You still have to do certain stuffs. There are sure, sure things that they have to do around a notification. The county is responsible for moving. They have to move them. It's not a national for them to kick them out of the housing they have today. They have to put them into a voucher system. But I think it's going to be really disruptive. I think it's going to be a lot of people. I actually, I just, so thank you. That was really helpful.
And in terms of disposing of the single-family homes, they have been talking about that for a decade or more. They have wanted, they've not found that as the most useful way to administer the housing.
I think Plaquemus County is one of the only counties that might have scattered sites anymore. And, and it's also the evolution of doing business as a housing authority has changed. And so Plaquemus County, by keeping that internal to the county, is, you know, they're operating within a different cost model than some other counties, you know, even nearby counties that contract out to a community-based organization to act as the housing.
You know, I would like to get an update on Hillside. And I would like to find out, just, you, what you brought up does concern me as well, that disruption. You know, that, that could create a lot more barriers for people. I'm, I'm, I just have concerns because, and this was something that we brought up when we were on the planning mission, because that's how far I want to be approved, I think. So it's crazy to see how fast these things go and how slow this thing is taking. That's what we're worried about.
Well, that makes you feel bad, like, what's taking forever?
In Hillside, we started about this segment.
I was just going to say, we can put them on the, on the agenda. So I would say that we have done, and then the county can talk about that actually. And I also think it might be helpful to have our, our building officially, since we're actually implementing at this point, I think that the timelines would be to speak about transparently. The other person who might be interested to bring in, because I know your concern's been the comment about kids, what happens to kids when they move out of town. When we did the joint meeting with the school district, we actually had some really amazing people in Wichita, I think, maybe one of them come in and talk about how kids are, are supported through this process or where they see the gaps in that process.
Yeah, that, that would be, I know something that my information, we had a concern about, you know, the timeline of, okay, we're going to relocate this for more, how long is that going to take? If you have any disruptions, what's that going to look like? Is there funding available? And also we have our CDT funds tied up in the project too, so I think that's an update on what's going on. What that's going to look like, if they have contingencies for some of these issues that, actually, most of these issues that council staff are doing.
Well, and I think the, the team that spoke from Wichita talked about requirements for actually pick up and drop up the kids who have moved out of the district. That's not, not a way for a school district to poverty. They have to actually, you know, to address the concerns of the family and make sure that kids stay in their school, in their home groups, in their spaces. But if people fall through the hoop, it doesn't
It's all the time.
So I think it's an interesting conversation. It doesn't work so well all the time. So I think it's an interesting conversation with that, is that maybe the city can support.
Yes.
I'm gonna do that.
I, I wanna make sure that I'm sharing the concerns that come up for me in these meetings, but also not to give you the impression that. Um, you know, that this is like a five-alarm fire. Um, I don't mean to come across alarmist or, you know, discounting the contributions that the county staff have to put in. However, these are large structural changes to a model that the, that the Housing Authority of Clackamas County has had for a long time. And with this type of change, it is possible that residents here in Milwaukee will fall through the cracks. Kind of about to happen.
Well, the, the structural changes are real. And I think that that's another place where you won't be gonna get involved. Like, is this the way that, is that way the Housing Authority is structured to actually work? I don't know.
So one other thing that I'll mention, because we do have some change that's happening. Is that, um, the county administrator will be reaching out to all jurisdictions that have scattered sites. For a letter of support as the reposition, they call it repositioning. There's a definition for what repositioning is. Um, in housing authority language. But, um, as that process begins, that they will be reaching out to our jurisdiction. Someone.
Gary knows, so one of us will catch it.
Okay.
Do you want that to come back, Councilor?
Um.
It's almost amazing.
I think it would be, yeah. I feel like this is something that we watch, um. The, you know, every once in a while at the seat board table, we get an update about this. But every month I sit in, um, I'm on the housing advisory for the, yeah, housing advisory board for the housing authority. So we get those updates and we have an opportunity to ask those questions. So as this dialogue continues for us. Let me know if you have questions that you want me to get answers to in those meetings and I can report back on that.
Oh, definitely.
Um, yeah. So, um, we should be getting some news soon about the, uh, city-led efforts, the applications that we put in. Um, it doesn't sound like we'll get everything that we asked for, but we had some pretty compelling asks. I remain optimistic. Um, and then I wanted to mention that I sat in, um, virtually on the historic downtown N B A meeting last night. Where members from the Saint John's congregation, um, made a presentation about some of the discussions that they've been having around, um, shelter. And using some of their space in a way that can provide short-term shelter for, um, more vulnerable populations. So they've taken, um, really the last year and led this very, very thoughtful process. Um, they have, uh, different subcommittees within their congregation to look at things like security and floor layout. Um, there's a really great report that's in the materials from the N B A meeting. So if you just look at the, the packet from that meeting, the report is in there. Um, but they're asking the right questions and they're being very intentional about, um. You know, how this, how this would roll out in their building, but also because they have, um, a child, a preschool program that's in the building as well. So they want to talk about, you know, how, how they would provision space out. It looks like they would want to begin some type of a pilot possibly this winter. And that would be for severe weather shelter. Um, they were told that they're able to accommodate more people than they're actually feeling ready to start with. And I think that that's really wise. So I think that at this point they're proposing the pilot be for about twenty. Um, and I think that that could be scaled, you know, based on volunteers. Um, it also depends on a conversation that they need to have with the county. About whether they could be, um, identified as one of the severe weather shelters. So I just wanted to update you all on that and, um, hopefully more soon. On May.
Yeah.
Oh, I just have one other thing. I'm sorry. I know I'm keeping you from dinner. Um, I wanted to mention that, um, in the legislature, uh, we know that measure one ten has been, um, adjusted. And, um, Clackamas County has, is, has already put in a letter to participate in the deflection program, which is the early adoption of. What, you know, some of this, um, recalibration will look like. But early funding, um, I think is, is estimated at about twenty million dollars statewide. Um, the funding has to go through the Criminal Justice Commission and so that we like. We're, we're probably months away from knowing what that looks like on the ground in Clackamas County. But if I hear updates around that area too, and if folks are interested, we can.
That's it.
That's it.
That was amazing.
Very powerful.
Thank you.
And Councilor Edma, you, you are not in any committees or not, so you don't have any councils of sorts?
I don't know to say that the parks, uh, get public interest as well. Well, intended.
Considering the weather.
Yeah.
I'm certainly well-intended and the picture of the kids with the shovels is on, there's a couple of them on Facebook. I labeled one of them, the future arms and recreation work. So, um. Well, I'll just say that, um, tomorrow, I have given, you know, I usually report my meetings, um, by email, but. Uh, tomorrow is the N C P R D District Advisory Committee. I sent you guys all their budget, um, tax document today. Um, if anybody has any questions they want me to ask, uh, once they look at that, please contact me individually. I'm happy to ask the questions. Questions I have are about the. Trying to get clarity around the funding for Concord and where it came from, where all the different parts of it are. Um, but if you look at their prognosis, it's not good. They're, they, they are, uh, showing, you know, you know, shortfalls starting next year in some cases, um. An interesting discussion, I think. Um, that, that meeting isn't that long, is it? What anybody wants to do, um, but it does happen in person out at the, uh, aquatic center. Um, and, uh. Oh, I will just say that, um, Counselor, I mean, Commissioner Savas. Uh, approached me and asked to talk about parks. I just told him, you told us. Uh, that we wouldn't talk, we couldn't talk about parks and we got a letter from you guys saying we couldn't talk about parks until, uh. Until the legal process was over and, uh, he, he said, well, it wouldn't be negotiation. It would just be a conversation. Anyway, I declined to have that conversation, um. Uh, but I think he's probably o- offering it to others as well, um, so I just put that out there for what it's worth. Um, maybe we'll hear that they've decided they want to go back in the conversation, which would be fine. Um, the, the sort of two-on-two conversations that we were trying to have. Um, all right, if nobody wants.
I'll just, uh, you know, you need one of me at coffee with him. He didn't mention an agenda or parks or anything like that. But I will tell you that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna be on guard, you know. Uh, because I think, you know, that, that, you know, once you start, you know, things, things will get slippery slope. And I would just say that we kind of, we, we just need to be in sync to, um. And I think that we just don't have a lot of information at this point.
So the District Advisory Committee meets tomorrow. A week from tomorrow, the county commissioners sit as the board of N C P R D, which they have not done in six months. Um, and I do expect that meeting, unless there's some news announced before that meeting about. Wichita being sold back to the school district, I do expect that meeting to be inundated with, um, Wichita supporters. Um, I, I don't think there's an agenda yet for that meeting, but we'll probably be able to. I'm curious about what happens in the next week on Wichita.
Um, not about Wichita, but I forgot to mention that, um, the stabilization center, um, was funded. Um, there was an additional one million dollars funded by the State Legislature. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. It is an ask that was put forward under House Bill forty-ten, which is projects to improve access to kids. And so that was a successful ask.
You know, uh, Representative Gamba mentioned that on Saturday at the park and I had, you know, there had been an ask and I thought we'd heard like a. One point five million dollar product price tag on that project. So I was still surprised to hear four million.
Do you, do you have more? Do you want?
No, go ahead.
Uh, so first and foremost is because they're doing both parts. So originally when the one point five was being requested, it was for the twenty-three hour stabilization upfront. This allows for the full building. The other piece is that it's replacement funds. So they actually will move funds that they were going to put to the stabilization fund to another project. Um, and that makes the total budget, I believe, four million. Uh, so it's not additive. It's replacement and, and added. I think it's extra money, but it allows for both the front and back to be. Which is important, I mean.
Uh, the rumor is that the funding also, uh, that they purchased the childcare center on two twenty-four also got funded. But they are waiting for the governor to sign before they make any. Any announcements or press releases or anything. But hopefully that will happen in the next week or two and we'll see a press release on that. It can be great. All right. Other things? Oh, all right. Well, with that then, we're adjourned.